Yeah. Are you gonna put the flag up on the screen tonight, Jim?
Yes, yup, it's all set to go on a, and hopefully. There is. Alright, yeah, I have it ready. Well, Tim Frisbee's coming in. Colin, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Alright, Colin's on board. So again, we do have a, Rick Holmes is coming in now. Danny, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do you have anything at the time of talk on agenda or the last one?
I would only have a quick question about the golf course.
Okay, I will, um, then we'll call on you when it gets down to citizen comments for agenda items. I was just looking, um, usually we do it two different spots, Bill, and I used a template from a few months ago and didn't catch it in time. So it says citizen comments for agenda and non-agenda items. I think with the addition of 11E.
Yeah.
Um, the and as well as the new number on the warrant report, which is a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, or hundred and twenty-eight thousand, six, six, three, ten, that we separate those two, if you're okay with it, and move non-agenda items down to, um, which would be 11F.
Okay, yeah, got it.
Sorry about that.
Try to make that clear as we go through.
Would we just say approval of the agenda is amended and bring up those amend changes?
Yeah. Well, I'll ask for changes and we'll get the changes and then approve it with the changes. Yeah.
Okay.
Is Gail on yet?
I am here.
Okay, didn't see, I didn't see on my screen yet. I gotta flip it round or something. There you are. You're with Jenny Holmes.
Okay.
I'm showing one minute, Jim?
One minute, that's what I have.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting for Monday, October nineteenth, the Vicksburg Village Council to order. And if you'd all join me in a pledge of allegiance to the flag, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the people, probably, for which it stands. One nation. Thank you. With that, I'll ask for a moment of silence. And when you're ready, Jim, would you do roll call?
Yes, sir. Roll call. Trustee Holmes.
Here.
Trustee Merrill.
Here.
Trustee Reister.
Yeah.
President Pro Temp Frisbee.
Here.
Trustee Bailey.
Here.
President Adams.
Here.
And trustee Keller should be joining us. He's excused.
Okay. With that, we have an agenda in front of us right now. I doubt any additions or corrections to that agenda. Jim, would you start with the staff's corrections?
Yes, corrections will be in addition to, uh, 11E Edward. Will be a report from the Director of Communications, Alex Lee, on an update to Christmas in the village. Under, um, 11F will be citizen comments for non-agenda items. So that will be currently, that's under agenda item number eight. But we'll separate agenda comments from non-agenda comments. We also have a updated number on the check register warrant report. Uh, we did quite a, we received a number of invoices, um, over the weekend and processed today. So that number will be one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars and ten cents. The listing of those checks and the warrants were distributed to the council via blind copy, uh, email. Uh, I think it was mid-morning today. Be happy to answer any questions, but those are the three changes.
Okay, with those changes, are there any other requests by the council?
I just have, I just have one thing, um, for the minutes of the regular council meeting of last month, Julie Merrill's name was left off of the person in attendance. So that needs to be corrected.
Thank you. With that, are there any other? If not, I'd ask Jim to do roll call.
Alright, this, this is, do we have a motion to approve the agenda with the noted changes?
Julie Merrill here making a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there support?
Reister, support.
Been moved and supported. Any further comments before we take roll call? Jim, would you do roll call?
Okay, the roll call is for approval of this agenda. Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
Trustee Merrill.
Yes.
Trustee Reister.
Yes.
Trustee Bailey.
Yes.
President Pro Temp Frisbee.
Yes.
President Adams.
Yes. Okay, I show on the agenda, no scheduled appearances. There's nothing been added?
No, sir.
Uh, public official appearances, none?
Correct, none, sir.
Okay, and then citizens comment for agenda items. We have three minutes for agenda item comments at this time. I think there is one.
Yup, we'll, uh, we'll start with, uh, Mr. Olson. And then I'll call on Jackie Coney and then Ryan Wagner if they have comments. So we'll start with Mr. Olson.
Uh, Jim, I'd like to know, on the agreement with the golf course for the next three years, um, if at some point the golf course were to be sold, would this agreement carry into the new company that would purchase a golf course, or would they have to renegotiate, um, at that time?
Um, if President Adams, I can't answer that question. I can answer it when we get to it on the agenda, whatever your preference is, President Adams.
Okay.
Okay, well, uh, you'll answer it as part of the agenda?
Certainly. Is there other comments or questions you have, Mr. Olson?
Nope, that was pretty much it.
Okay, we'll, we'll cover it when we cover the golf course then. Any other citizen on an agenda item?
And I, I believe Jackie and Ryan both know how to hit the hand or single, but if you wanna, on, on mute, I certainly can, uh, if you have a comment on an agenda item. There is a phone number. It's a six-one-six, number three-one-eight, but I believe that possibly is Mr. Ham.
Yeah, I'm here, Jim.
Okay, alright, no problem. Thank you, Tom.
Okay, that concludes the citizens' time on agenda items. Uh, next we have a consent agenda for the night's meeting, which includes minutes of our October fifth meeting, a warrant report which has been corrected to cover a hundred and twenty-five thousand, six, sixty-three. And there's no other items in there for council action. I'd entertain a motion for approval of that consent agenda.
Frisbee, I'll make a motion. We, um, accept the consent agenda as.
Is there support?
Holmes, support.
Okay, been moved and supported. Any further comments or questions before we do roll call?
I'll just make the comment that the change that trustee Reister, um, that will be made to the minutes having, uh, trustee Merrill present at the last meeting.
Thank you. With that, we'll do roll call.
Trustee Bailey.
Yes.
Trustee Reister.
Yeah.
Trustee Merrill.
Yes.
Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
President Pro Temp Frisbee.
Yes.
President Adams.
Yes.
And the motion passes.
Okay. Village managers' action items, Jim, you wanna lead us through those?
Yeah, on 10A, I'll, I'll start with the question that Mr. Olson posed. Um, it, it won't have impact, uh, for the council and Mr. Olson. Um, the golf, the village, due to IRS regulations, uh, with the bond that the debt on the golf course is associated, the village, at the very earliest, it could sell the golf course if, at the time chose to, would be October second of 2023. This agreement is a three-year agreement that takes us through the golf seasons 2021, 2022, and 2023. So, um, having said that, uh, it's, it's tough and I hesitate to get involved in hypotheticals three years from now. Um, so I'll pause there for questions, um, from the council and Danny. I, again, if you have further questions, I'd always be happy to meet with you and talk on the phone, but I hope that I've answered that. And the village cannot, uh, the, the council, um, I will maybe explain it this way. This council or a future, future council, uh, would be precluded by law. They couldn't, they could not vote seven oh to sell the golf course, um, prior to that date in 2023, the October date. So, um, hopefully that, uh, answer, answers that question as it pertains to the life of this agreement. As, as far as, uh, the village of Vicksburg and Renaissance Golf first entered into a management agreement in March of 2018, the golf course operation under the leadership of Tom Hamm and his staff at Renaissance Golf has simply been, uh, head and shoulders above, uh, in operating the golf course, uh, since my tenure as village manager in 2016. From 2016 through 2018, comments that I received from our public was predominantly negative. Not only from golfers on the conditions of the golf course, lack of response, customer service, among other things, but also from non-golfers with uncertainty if tax dollars would be potentially have to be used to support the golf course. Happy to report that the village of Vicksburg has not used any general fund tax money to operate in any capacity Angels Crossing Golf Course, uh, since August of 2016. The strategy that we implemented in the spring of 2018 is focused on improving the conditions of the golf course. The greens, fairways, tee boxes on every single hole of the golf course have been substantially improved. There's been investments in capital items as well as, as investments in the practice, uh, facilities out at Angels, including the golf practice range as well as practice, uh, greens, bunkers, and chipping areas. We have brought in, uh, equipment, including a forestry machine that opened up the sightlines of the golf course immensely. Equipment has been properly maintained, inventoried, and utilized. The merchandise from the pro shop has been improved with profits going to the village of Vicksburg for, for the first time since we own the course. To be succinct, we developed and implemented a plan for the golf course and relentlessly reviewed the plan each of the past two years. The results have exceeded our expectations and we are looking forward to the future. Renaissance Golf has not raised its management's fees from the original proposal in March of 2018. The new monthly fee will be ten thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars throughout the length of the agreement. This is approximately 6.9% higher than the original 2018 fee rate. What was once a, a subject matter, the golf course, that brought predominantly negative comments, has swung 180 degrees. Throughout the entirety of this golf season, I've received nothing but positive comments about the staff as well as the condition of the golf course. There's excitement surrounding the future of Angels Crossing. I give credit to Tom Hamm, his staff at Renaissance Golf, and their commitment to making Angels Crossing Golf Course one of the finest golfing experiences a citizen can have, uh, in playing it. I look forward to this fall. There's been quite a bit of, uh, prepping in both the greens, tee boxes, and again, the sightlines, uh, for the, uh, 2021 season. Happy to report that staff is recommending that, to the village council, to extend the agreement with Renaissance Golf Management for three additional years. Uh, Tom, Tom was able to call in. I know he's, uh, quite busy this time of the year operating as many golf courses as he has, but be happy to answer any questions, uh, the council might have. Or if you have questions specific to Tom, um, I'll go ahead and direct him, uh, his way.
Ms. Mallory, it's, uh, Holmes, just a quick question. Um, is this the first time the village has entered into a, um, a contract? Specifically, the, the template language we're looking at from Renaissance, or do we have an existing agreement in place?
No, we signed in a, an existing agreement, I think it was March ninth of 2018, and pretty much mirrors that same template.
Okay, cause the question they had was, is that has the village attorney reviewed the language previously, or?
Yes.
This one? Okay, thank you.
And, and to clarify Rick's question, though, um, it's the same template and it was reviewed on the original template.
Jim, I'd like to just, Emma, uh, echo your comments and say, uh, Tom Hamm's done an excellent job selecting staff for the course and maintaining them there. Uh, I think both David Messini, who served as an officer on the PGA at the top level, and Jason Culbert, that's our greenskeeper out there, are meticulous and are, and just wanna please customers to the nth degree. And for me, Tom and his organization have exceeded, you know, my expectations and those of the members I golf with. So I'm very, very pleased.
Thank you. Is there other questions?
Well, firstly, just being that Mr. Adams is our subject matter expert. Uh, and me being a novice, I, I take that to heart. So thank you, Bill. I was gonna ask you about that. And I, I wanna reiterate, you know, Mr. Hamm, based on from what I've seen in the last four years of, of, you know, some oversight, I, I really commend what happened out there and the leadership that that golf course has undertaken. So thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Hey, Jim, can I, can I ask Tom a direct question? Is that possible?
No, no, that's why, uh, he availed himself tonight. So if anyone has a question for Tom, I, I believe that he'll be able to hear you if there's a pause, um, I'll say, but go ahead.
Okay, thanks. Um, hey, Tom, it's Rick Holmes. Just, uh, question is, in having driven by the golf course frequently, um, this past summer, it was obvious that we had a lot of play. Um, just curious from your perspective is, uh, you know, why, why you think that is? Is it, is it COVID related? There's, there wasn't a lot for people to do, or did you, did you hear from folks coming in, you know, uh, good things talked about the course or maybe something else? I'm just curious what your, uh, what your thoughts are as far as what, what was driving, um, play on the course this year?
Sure, Rick. Um, well, I, the answer to your question is yes. Um, we think, uh, I mean, obviously COVID, uh, you know, in our, in our panic, you know, in March, when all this was, we didn't know if we're gonna be able from the golf courses. We didn't know if we're gonna be able to use carts. Uh, it was quite the, uh, quite the predicament. Um, it turns out, um, it was fabulous for golf because, as you stated, I think people, you know, couldn't play softball, you couldn't bowl, you couldn't do any, really, anything. And, uh, a lot of people got introduced or reintroduced to the game. Um, so that was one part of it. The second part is, we have been following the business plan that we laid out for the village, uh, to just greatly improve the golf experience there. And that comes with improved numbers as far as rounds and revenues in itself. But COVID, uh, you know, I can't, I can't, uh, say that it, it didn't help us. I mean, it seems kind of morbid to say that, but it certainly has helped the golf industry. And most of the golf courses, um, that we manage, well, I should say all of them were up, uh, anywhere from 10 to 25%.
Yeah.
But now that, that being said, yeah, uh, what we're doing, the path that you've chose and to improve the product, um, we've, uh, we've bumped up fees. No one complains. Um, you know, and we plan on, you know, improving that or increasing that green fee again, uh, this year to get the course in line for what type of experience it is. So, um, it, it really is a combination, but there's no question that COVID did help, uh, the numbers.
I, I, I think on that theme as well, though, early on in, in March, when we didn't know, having a subject matter expert, and, and I truly look at it no different than, than the different directors. Um, we, you've heard me in the past, and I don't wanna get long-winded, but I think it's important when you put together a team. Uh, we talked about, uh, the treasurer, Michelle, being on, on the ball for grant opportunities. Chief Sanderson, the way he's led in the police department, Randy. And, uh, I, I equate Tom as the director running golf operations. So some things that he's too humble to relay, uh, early on is, um, Tom set in place the appropriate, uh, help under, um, the CARES Act with the golf course. He also, his, he, I think, was personally involved, but his team certainly, when carts became an issue and, and, uh, social distancing within a cart, they, they patented and designed a plastic barrier that could go on the cart to separate, uh, people playing on the carts, which enabled our carts to meet the mandates of the governor's office right away. And then, again, just the follow-through of the daily operations and put him putting together his team out there. Um, we're, he, he, I bought into what he says. We're 65, 70% there through this plan, but this golf course in this community is gonna see those conditions improve, the play improve. And, and it's really, I look at, we're looking at a couple different programs, uh, that, because it's the number one draw of people outside the 49097 area code that we can highlight our village to. And at minimum, have those individuals become curious at what two and a half miles to the northeast lies in a great village? So what we have for the future, we are bringing Tom back on the first meeting in December to give a thorough presentation where the golf operations was, uh, during this golf season, as well as project out what the plan is for 2021.
Okay. Well, it, at this time, though, I'd like to entertain a motion for approval of Mr. Mallory's recommendation for a three-year got, contract with Renaissance Golf. That contract has been circulated to the council. Is there a motion for council?
Mr. Adams, trustee Bailey, I'd be more than willing to make that motion.
Is there support?
I support it.
Okay, been moved and supported. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, I'd ask for a roll call, Jim?
Certainly. Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
Trustee Merrill.
Yes.
Trustee Reister.
Yes.
Trustee Bailey.
Yes.
President Pro Temp Frisbee.
Yes.
President Adams.
Yes, and congratulations, Mr. Ham.
Thank you, Mr. Ham.
Tom, I know you're pretty busy, so none of us, uh, will take it the wrong way, uh, if you, uh, don't remain on the rest of the council meeting, but that's certainly your choice.
Alright, thank you very much, folks.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Uh, the second item is, is another opportunity, um, through the state of Michigan. Uh, the state, uh, the governor has, uh, developed with, uh, the legislation a program that is committing, committing five hundred million dollars in total financial commitments towards Michigan's water infrastructure needs. There's 207 million dollars for drinking water investments and 298 million dollars for clean water investments. This includes opportunities of grants that are in the range of 30 to 40% matching dollars for issues, uh, that impact the village of Vicksburg, including manganese. Uh, staff is recommending the village council approves village staff to submit for as many grants that the village is eligible to submit for within this program. And we're just following the policy we put in place a couple of years ago to ensure that, that we get council support before, uh, submitting for a grant.
Okay. Is there a motion for same, and then we can have discussion?
Uh, this is Gail Reister. I make a motion to authorize the village manager to submit a grant to the State of Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy, Michigan Clean Water Program.
Okay.
Very nice, Gail. Frisbee, I'll support it.
Okay, uh, question I have, Jim, should we, here on the update on the manganese issues, uh, before or after we vote on this?
Um, I, I can, whatever, whatever the preference is, I can wait until during the village managers' report, if that's okay with you?
Okay, I can wait. Alright, we have a motion, a second. Is there any further questions or concerns?
I, Frisbee, yes, um, I understand that we're, this is, this is an opportunity to reach out and see what grants are available. But I want to just let the council and the staff know that it's gonna be very difficult for me to start supporting any more expenditures when it comes to sewer-related costs. Um, I've heard, not a near full this week, from residents and taxpayers of this village that, you know, and myself. you know, and myself personally, I did not expect to see the amount of increase in the sewer that we've seen. And it's going to become an issue. I'm sure that your staff's already heard a few comments about it. But I just want to make sure that we are going about this in, in the best possible light from an expenditure first-hand point. So just because we get awarded a grant at 30 to 40%, we have to come up with 70, 60% matching funds. So let's just be very fiscally responsible and judicious about this. Thank you.
Appreciate those comments.
Yeah.
Is there any other comments?
Well, to Mr. Frisbee's comments, just the ones we're, we're looking at, especially under, this is underwater, are, are three different areas. One would be if there's any financial assistance in the development of that third well. The second is anything that's available for the replacement of lead pipes within the village. We're under a state mandate to begin a process that we change our lead pipe leads in the village 5% every year for the next 20 years. And those are $4,000 to $5,000 apiece, as well as the issue of manganese. On that, on manganese, and I think it, a little bit, I'll go into more detail in a few minutes, but it's specifically listed out in one of the grant opportunities. There's only a total of $25 million, which might sound like a lot, but when you go statewide, isn't that much money? But it certainly could help in with, with the village in that. So those are the three principal areas that, that we're looking at.
Okay, are there any other comments from council or questions? We have a motion and support. We'll call it to a vote, Mr. Mallory?
Yes. Trustee Bailey? Trustee Holmes?
Yes.
Trustee Merrill?
She's muted.
Julie?
She's getting it out.
The dog wasn't getting active, so I muted. Okay, yes.
Trustee Merrill's a yes. Trustee Reister?
Yeah.
Trustee, or President Protep Frisbee?
Yes.
And President Adams?
Yes.
Okay.
Village manager reports?
Yes. Update on 22nd Street. Obviously, the project is entering its third full week out on 22nd Street. And if anyone's have been out by that area, certainly quite a project has commenced out there. And first I want to start out with, it's, it's certainly, I try to take each of these experiences, especially since we're moving from the, from the boardroom out to the, out to the actual application as, as a learning lesson and some early points are certainly with the communication. And some people have been caught off guard, as at times have, have I and staff. So I think we've, we've got a system put in place between the engineer firm, the contractor and staff that we should have much, we should have better, we certainly internally will have better communication and therefore will have better communication with the council and with the public. The dewatering is pretty completed and basically the dewatering is they're taking all the water out of the ground down under 20 feet because that system is 20 feet in depth. And we'll, by the end of the week, start to be putting in the new, new pipe. They, they, right as we sit now, do not have a concern, though we're certainly vigilant of the weather and timing as we're approaching the end of the asphalt season to make sure we can put that road back. Worst case scenario there would be a temporary road if, if we feel that it should be asphalted after, after the thaw in the spring. But as we sit right now, we anticipate that road being put back in place. So I'll, I'll take a pause there and answer any questions the council might have on the project on 22nd Street.
Frisbee, I, I just, I have to plead ignorance to the extent of the construction that's taking place. I didn't understand the dewatering. What's that, an 18-inch line that's running across the street through the yards out, out back? So I, I would ask next time that we, you know, I, I fully understand what's coming ahead of us with the sewers in, in Washington and the downtown area. But I, I, I just saw they're gonna dig a ditch along the side of the road and drop some new sewer pipe in. So now I was taken off guard with the amount of, of construction going on. And as I'm sure the residents that live out that way were, were somewhat caught off guard with the amount of work that's happening out there. When I was told November, early November, they planned to lay down asphalt, I be honest, I didn't even know they were going to be taking that road out. I thought it was going to be off the side of the road. You know, and peed on anybody's bike. So if, if we can just, I need to do a better job going forward, understanding the, the whole scope of these projects so I can talk intelligently to the, the residents of the community. But is that what's across the road in that long pipe? Is that the dewatering pipe?
Yeah, the black pipe on top of the ground, and then that runs to the east all the way to the Sunset Lake waterways, just north of Sunset Lake, where it's discharging the water. So there's a multi, a series of pumps. And, um, yeah, it's, yeah, and it, it highlights going into the project downtown, which will begin after the first thaw this upcoming spring. It's going to be rather intense. And I think last week, we had direct contact with, and luckily for us, dealing with the same engineering firm and the same contractor. So when we met about a week and a half ago and and kind of all got on the same page of, of what I'm calling our internal team's communication is, I think it will help. Alex, and probably on this project, you'll see updates a couple of times a week. And as we propel into the downtown project, they'll not only be daily updates on our, on our website and social media, but we're also going to strategize face-to-face meeting because they were talking a lot of, that'll occur one time a week as well as Zoom meetings, probably twice a week at nightly times. Because there'll be that much communication and, and different variables taking place. I can tell you downtown's going to be the same depth as 22nd Street, though. At points, it'll, it'll be down as far as 20, and a lot more going on downtown as we're changing any lead leads. We, we come in contact with, and I think there's at least two sections of water main, maybe three, being replaced as well.
Right.
Okay.
Jim, that's not the only thing that's going on there, right? They're enlarging, aren't they doing something with the lift as well?
I, I didn't catch that cleanly, Colin. What's that?
Other than enlarging the pipe over there on 22nd, aren't they doing something with the lift as well, the lift station?
No, the, the lift stations that'll be impacted are Washington Street and, and a little bit at the start of Spruce. But the, the pipe is getting connected to the lift station on 22nd Street, but not, nothing to the actual lift station itself.
I saw a drone video that kind of showed that it looked like there was a little bit more going on than just the pipe. So that's why I ask.
Why, why do we, why's the need to de-water then if the list, the actual isn't being modified at all?
They have to, they have to get the groundwater out because the pipe's going so far down.
Does it come in at that lower level at, at the base of the sub? So it's coming in 18 feet below grade or something?
Yes.
All right.
Okay. On, on the manganese, we will be Saturday doing a, an aggressive hydrant flushing throughout the village. And Monday, the 26th, we'll be taking samples. I know some councils' households, we took samples of it, so we'll be in contact with you. But the 28 samples that are taken throughout the system will be at minimum. We might add to that sample collection. But again, that's was the plan to, to get, to continue to capture data on the system and to be able to evaluate the data on how best long-term to provide water to the citizens of the village. We have asked Prime Newhoff to provide this council with a presentation which will occur November 2nd. That'll be the first meeting in November. They will provide an update as well as some high-altitude options. It's, I will relay to the council a very frustrating topic. Just due to the fact that this is an element that is not regulated by the department at a state level that regulates the water. So, but we'll get into more details. I just, the main point, wanted to notify the council that we have scheduled Prime Newhoff to deliver a presentation November 2nd.
Okay.
Any questions there? Or I'll move to plow trucks?
I think we're ready for plow trucks.
Well, just to use an example of, I guess, what it costs to operate a, operate a small village, we go through the plow trucks to get them all prepared the best we can for the upcoming winter. And we did, on, on, one of the 2003 plow trucks invested just over $5,000. It ended up being on the rear hubs, rims and new tires to, to ensure that that truck would be at its best operation throughout the winter. On a second truck, and we did know it, it noticed a radiator leak at the end of last season. We invested the $900 to put a new radiator in that truck. We have received our first shipment of a 100 tons of road salt, which are ready to go. Not that we're looking forward to snow flying, but we are certainly prepared when it does. And then on, on council meetings, as I just said, Prime Newhoff will be given an update on manganese on November 2nd. We do have an election on November 3rd where we're encouraging our residents to certainly exercise their right and get out and vote. And then on the second council meeting in November, November 16th will be a transfer and swearing-in of a new council. On the first meeting in December, as stated, Tom Hamm will give a presentation on, on the golf course. The second meeting in December, I anticipate members of the Michigan Municipal League to give a presentation on their job study, job and wage study that we hired them to do in July. I did have conversations by email with that group today. It is progressing. We have 15 comparable municipalities and they're just now, they've received some of those responses and are in the second phase of personal contact. So we compare apples and apples. The audit internally for the fiscal year 2019, 2020 has, has well started. And this is behind the scenes that, that our citizens and council don't see. But probably a couple of weeks ago, we, Michelle Morgan walked into puddle of quicksand and gets to juggle all the additional requests during this audit process, not only for the accounts receivable, which as treasurer is her area, but Michelle has, has been a trooper and a team member because we also have to put together the accounts payable section. So I, I really appreciate that. And as we'll have, a lot of it's being done remotely with Aaron Stevens' team, but they will be on site, I think, next week or the week after for a couple of days. We anticipate the preliminary report being generated in early December, and we've scheduled the second meeting, as has become our tradition, to give that audit report in January. The initial financials are very favorable. I'm proud of them. Expenses under revenues will be north of $400,000 to the good for the village. And so we'll wait till all the official results. But just to give you a sense of what's coming up, it, it's unique here. It's in some aspects. I'll just leave it at, it's been a unique year and certainly a busy one, and it's not going to slow down. So I'll pause there if there's any questions.
Any questions by council?
Well, if I may, you, you talked about Michelle picking up extra duties. I don't know if this is the time for it, and I don't need any elaboration other than the fact going well or going bad, the search for a clerk. Got an interest in that position?
Yeah, we, we've received multiple candidates that certainly will be offered an interview. We've, I've decided to have a two-part interview process, which we have a member of the human resource committee as well as Alex Lee and Denise Harold, our utility clerk, kind of on the first wave of the interview. During, and then the same day, that candidate will interview with Michelle Morgan and myself. I anticipate those interviews taking place the week of November 6th with a decision and an offer made that same week.
Thank you.
Okay. I think that brings us down to Alex Lee's report, Jim?
Yes, I'll turn it over to Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Jim. I'm going to spend just a few minutes talking about Christmas in the village in a very, very difficult year. The Christmas in the Village Committee has been meeting since late August. We have tried everything possible to delay an unpopular but necessary decision. We tried to wait out the pandemic, health guidelines around limited participation in events, political arguments from all sides of the health and wellbeing issues, and everybody's fondest wishes to do the things we always have. With COVID-19 cases rising in the state and in the county, and in the shadow of some of our bigger cities in the county canceling holiday events, here we are with our backs against the wall in terms of time. The Christmas in the Village Committee feels for those reasons. And for the safety of our citizens, we will be forced to cancel the Christmas parade and many of the activities usually associated with Christmas in the village. However, the committee is determined to have activities that will draw people into our community and enjoy the Christmas season. We have come up with a wide variety of innovative and sometimes unworkable plans in our journey. But we've settled on having an outside-in Christmas in the village this year. And what that means is we want families to enjoy activities in the safety of their vehicles or walking with family outside, using masks and social distancing. To that end, the committee has adopted an approach that we hope to kick off on December 5th and run through New Year's Day. And here are some of our planned activities. We are going to go all out and then some in decorating the downtown. We are going to have our amazing float designers move away from their decorations on wheels and adopt and decorate our And adopt and decorate our parks and public spaces. We're going to recreate a nostalgic Christmas card lane running through the historic village. And we will also have decorating prizes in all three of those categories. And we have also discussed luminaries and would be ready to support one of our neighborhoods or organizations. That would want to take that on. Bill Adams has agreed to help with fundraising. Our DPW has been involved in these discussions. As well as our police department and our downtown businesses. So with your approval tomorrow morning, we'll plan on getting to work.
I think that sounds fantastic, really. And I love that. I love that Christmas card lane thing idea. I think that's great.
I agree with you and I would like to see the village take a vote and I would entertain a motion to support. The Christmas in the Village as outlined by Alex Lee. So if somebody would do that, motion to support.
I move that we support the Christmas in the Village activities that have been set forth before us today.
Is there a second?
Own support.
Okay, been moved and supported. Any further discussion on this? I will help Alex raise funds. We've got a funding strategy and. We gotta get going on it right away. So we got a motion, we got support. Any other comments before we take roll call?
Well, this is a tough one. I totally, I I support Alex and and the. Christmas in Village Committee and what they've done, but I I I just cannot support cancelling the parade. I just can't do it. I don't know what the the synopsis here or the. To be here with our committee, but I've talked to a lot of people that just say, you know, it's my choice. Bureaucrat telling me I can't go down and socialize friends and family, so. I understand from a village's perspective, but from a personal perspective, I I don't buy into it.
Well, I think we need to be, we need to be understanding of our whole entire village. And I think that it's important to take into. There there are people who. We should not be in big crowds of people. It's just simply that. And if you're gonna have a big parade downtown, you're gonna have crowds of people.
People that want to be there. If you, if you're afraid of a crowd, don't come.
I just don't think it's a smart thing to.
Well, I guess it's a little different sitting back as a resident as to sitting here on a council of responsibility, so.
Right.
You're forcing me.
Okay, good.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further comments?
Holmes, I'd just like to say that I appreciate both comments that were made from trustee Reister and. Frisbee, it's, I mean, it's a national debate right now, folks, right? It's, we're all getting a little bit of fatigue here after seven, eight months of this. And candidly, we're all hearing it in the community as well from folks. You know, I think the one thing that from my perspective, I look at this and I think is is is. This the singular most important thing for me is that we have some type of Christmas holiday function. People have come to not only appreciate it, but expect it. And I think the fact that we can create something that has broad appeal. And I think in my two years in government, I found this to be true and that is. If both sides of an issue are aren't happy, then you probably made the right choice.
I and I think that it's, I think it's wise that people who have been going over this, like Alex and everybody that he's dealt with. And they've talked about it and talked about it. They've come up with a plan. They've come up with a plan that's probably fairly safe. So I I just commend them for doing that. We're not cancelling Christmas. We're just making it. It fit what's happening right now.
Yep. Any further comments by council? Hearing none, we'll do roll call on the vote.
Trustee Bailey.
Yes.
Trustee Holmes.
Yes.
Trustee Merrill.
Yes.
Trustee Reister.
Yes.
President Protep Frisbee.
Thank you, Alex. Yes.
President Adams.
Yes, motion passes.
Motion's back. Can I add one item to an upcoming council meeting, President Adams?
Please.
And since he's participated in this meeting, he's doing such a great job, I didn't want him to think I was gonna forget. Chief Sanderson, I've asked to update the council on the updated cameras. In the cruisers as well as body cameras at the next council meeting as well, so that'll come. It is progressing very positively and fully. I'll save all the the excitement for his presentation. But by all means, it's moving forward and and in this very positive, so I just want the council to be aware of that at the next meeting.
Very good.
That that concludes staff's report. I will, and I I apologize, we go through this stuff. And I think it's important in case I, if something's been heard. If Randy Skippers or Michelle Morgan have something to say that I've missed, I certainly want to provide you the opportunity.
Okay.
I see Randy shaking his head no. Same with Michelle, so that would conclude the report, Mr. Adams.
And I think that brings us to citizens' time for non-agenda items. If any citizen that's on this call would like to address a non-end item, this would be the time to raise your hand and let Mr. Mallory know.
Okay, I'll, I guess I'll I'll go around, see, is Jenny Holmes, do you have something? Mr. Olson, do you have anything?
Just on the Christmas parade, I'm disappointed too. But we have to live with what we have, so. But I thank Alex and the crew for for doing what they've done, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Olson, and Ms. Coney.
Nope, nothing for me. Thank you.
And Mr. Wagner.
Nothing for me. Thank you, Jim.
All right, and Mr. Ritzma, the same, I'll stick on or you're more unhappy to make any comments as well at this time? He's good. Turn it back to you, Mr. Adams.
Okay, it is, there's nothing from the village president at this time. We've covered the items. It's council's time and I'll start with Gail Reister. Anything, Gail?
No, I think I've said enough, but I I just want to commend Alex and his crew for coming up with some really good ideas. To make Christmas special this year. Thank you very much.
Okay. Is Carl Keller with us yet?
No.
No. Okay, Tim Frisbee.
I think we've covered it during our discussions. Thank you.
Okay, Rick Holmes.
Just a quick comment to reiterate what Gail said. Thank you, Alex and staff for for working on that. Let's not forget Halloween's coming up in a few short days away. And I think the village also did the right thing in 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 working with that that holiday. You know, we live in tough times and I think we're we're finding a way to to continue to keep traditions. Going in the community, but at the same time also taking to an account, you know, the restrictions that we should also acknowledge. So I think we're showing as a council and as staff is showing restraint with both of these areas. And again, would just like to thank Jim and the staff for for what they're doing to to make sure that we continue to. You know, with these traditions and keeping them moving forward.
Good. Colin Bailey.
I'm good, Bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie Merrill.
I was just gonna say, I live in downtown. I'm really gonna miss that parade, but it it's for public safety. I agree it needs to be cancelled. The nice thing about downtown Vicksburg is a lot of people really decorate. It's a beautiful place to take a stroll and and still hit some shops and restaurants around here safely. Not in a packed crowd because it gets so packed out here, so we'll just disperse and have fun different ways. Thanks.
Very, very good. I'm feeling like I missed somebody, but I don't know who it is.
Bill, if I may, I'll fill their shoes real quick. When I voted to support the changes in the plans downtown, I said, thank you, Alex Lee, yes. See you, Alex. I I I truly mean thank you for all the time and hard work your team has put into coming up with alternative plans, so. And thank you. And thanks for listening.
I think you have Mr. Bailey. I'm not sure if he was called on.
He was.
Okay.
Yeah, it was, I I I didn't write down Tim's name. I didn't check it off, so I I think we called on six council members and myself. Makes seven. So I were have covered all the agenda tonight. We can stand adjourned.
Right.